I want to call the regular Temple City City Council meeting for October 19th, 2021 to order pursuant to AB 361, signed by Governor Newsom. On September 16th, cities are allowed to host city council meetings via teleconferencing, and members of the public can observe and address the meeting telephonically or electronically. To listen to the meeting telephonically, please call 1-669-900-6833, meeting ID 811-1858-2184, pass code 788155, or through the city's live webcast on YouTube, Connect with TC. Madam City Clerk, roll call, please.
Yes, Mayor Councilmember Chavez?
Here.
Councilmember Mann?
Here.
Councilmember Viscara is absent. Mayor Pro Tem Sternquist?
I think...
I'm here. Thank you. Mayor Yu?
I'm here.
Use Councilmember Viscara.
Is there a second? A second then?
Second.
Okay, it's moving seconded. I guess, I guess we have no objections, so Councilmember Viscara is excused. Next item on the agenda is the invocation. We're very happy tonight to have Pastor Darryl Keltie of the Temple City Community of Christ Church, located at 5851 Temple City Boulevard. Pastor Keltie, welcome, and please lead us in prayer. You're on mute, Pastor. There you go.
Are we better? Okay, it's always good to do this for you. I enjoy it so much. Let us pray. Our heavenly Creator, who is the source of all things good, we, a few of your children, though we are socially distances from you and from one another, would come into your presence, which is ever-present, this day, to ask that you might be with us and with your Holy Spirit, you might be open in our minds to the concerns of this city of Temple City. We do this in all humility, that we might be able to conduct the business of this city, the city of Temple City, that we might do so for the betterment of all the people who live in this community. We would pray also for all those staff and those who might have the wisdom to do their individual tasks with diligence, that make a simple city a place to be proud of. And finally, to all of the audience here gathered, that we too made through our individual and corporate efforts, will leave this city a better place for future generations. This we thank you in our large, most holy name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Keltie.
You're welcome.
We appreciate.
Always welcome to do it.
Yeah. So next item is platitude allegiance. Would you please stand and join me in the platitude allegiance? Put your right hand over your heart and ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the book Publicoitsis stands, "One Nation Under God, In The Visible Liberty and Justice For All." Next item is ceremonial matters, presentations, there is none. So we move on to our next item, which is public comments, an item not listed on the agenda. The time for public comment starts now. I will ask any member of the public watching at home to call in at the Zoom number. Once you are on, the city clerk will make sure you are able to speak. Madam City Clerk, are there any public callers offering comments on this item?
Mayor Yu, we have one public caller on the line, and I've requested that they unmute if they wish to speak.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, so if you are calling in, please state your name so that you can address the city council.
Mayor Yu, the caller has not unmuted their audio.
Okay. Are there any email comments?
Mayor Yu, there are no email public comment requests.
Okay. So, so if there are no callers, well, nothing more from the public, and the reasonable time have been given for them to call in, I will close, close public comment and move on to the next item on the agenda. The next item is the consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be approved in a single motion as recommended unless removed for further discussion. If members of the city council or persons in the audience wish to discuss any matters listed on the consent calendar, please address them at this time. And I will ask any member of the public watching at home to call in at the Zoom number. Once you are on, the city clerk will make sure you are able to speak. Now, while the public is calling in, are there any council member questions or any item that you want to pull?
Mayor Yu, I had to make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Okay. I think that there are no callers. Madam Clerk, are there any callers? Doesn't seem like there are any. And are there any email comments?
Mayor, there are no email requests to speak.
Okay. And because there are no callers and no email, and we've been giving a reasonable time to, for them to call in, and now we have a motion. Do we have a second for the motion?
Oh, second.
Okay, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Sternquist?
Yes.
Mayor Yu?
Yes. So the consent calendar has been approved. Next item is public hearing. There is none. And then next item is unfinished business. We actually have a couple of items tonight. This first one is discussion and possible adoption of resolution to allow city council meetings to be held remotely, consistent with Assembly Bill 361. Starting with Mr. City Manager, Mr. Cook.
Mayor Yu, members of the council, before you is the same resolution that you saw three weeks ago related to continuing virtual meetings. We believe that there are the requisite findings in order for you to continue virtual meetings for another 30 days, and then at which time the council can then review those findings again 30 days from now and decide to continue the virtual meetings in it as of their best interest. And from a public health concern, meets the requirements to continue meeting virtually. This gives you the flexibility to continue forward, and we're here for any questions that you may have. I'm mute, sir.
All right. Thank you. Any council questions? Starting with Councilmember Mann, any questions?
I guess just for clarification, we'll be doing every 30 days, is that right?
Yes, sir. By law, the new Assembly Bill that governs us, you do have to make findings every 30 days to continue.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Chavez, any questions for staff?
I have no questions. I will have comments, but I'll save those for the appropriate time.
All right, thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Sternquist, any questions from you? So you're on mute, but...
I'm not muted.
Oh, now you. Now I can hear you. Sorry, it's my fault.
No questions, thank you.
Yeah, I don't have any questions either. At this time, I will open for public comment. And I'll ask any member of the public watching at home to call in at Zoom, at the Zoom number. Once you are on, the city clerk will make sure you are able to speak. Madam Clerk, are there any public callers offering comments on this item?
Mayor Yu, we have one public caller, and I requested the caller to unmute if they wish to speak.
Okay, we'll give the caller a moment. Madam Clerk, are there any email comments on this item?
Mayor Yu, there are no email requests to speak.
Okay. We'll give the public a little bit more time. But nothing more from the public, and a reasonable time have been given for them to call in, I will close public comment and bring it back to the city council for discussion. Any, so this time for the council members' final comments and questions, starting with Councilmember Mann.
Well, I think my comments are similar to the last time we talked about this, which is we had a lot of discussion about going back to chambers and I mean, I have no objection to going back, but I understand the concern with the Delta variant and trying to follow the science. It's a mix across the adjacent cities in our area. I know cities that have returned in person for quite some time, and others have gone back and forth, some have been hybrids. I don't know. It's hard, hard to say. I mean, there is certainly the convenience of meeting, meeting online. But I think it does solve some of those issues, but I don't know, I've yet to see our meetings. I mean, I guess one question I had was, as of now, if someone's tuning into our meeting right now, are they seeing what we're seeing on the screen right now? Or is, are they still seeing the still photo of us while we're speaking?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Madam Clerk, but they're still seeing the still photos, correct?
That's correct. Travis from Red88 Medias on the line, he's counsel should have additional questions.
So I guess maybe, I thought I heard from the last discussion that part of the amendment to the bill is a requirement that we switch over to that new display. So I guess when will that happen?
Mr. Councilman, this is Greg Murphy. That was apparently an error on my part when the bill was being discussed by city attorneys, the phrase holding the meeting open to the public and making sure the public's right to speak to their council members was being interpreted as requiring them to be able to see your faces and see your reactions. That interpretation has not held as entities have moved forward, and so there is a wide variety of broadcasts going out right now. The city could move to that, but you do not need to, which was something that two weeks ago, I was under the impression that we did need to, but as part of the city attorney's report, I'll give a few more updates on, on sort of how this is moving legally unless you'd like to hear those updates now.
I don't think the update is really the root of, but I appreciate the answer. Thank you. I guess my question is, from a technical standpoint, is that difficult to do? Or is there a reason why we don't want to do it that way?
My understanding, it's not a difficult thing to do to, for the broadcast to be the Zoom meeting itself. What would be a little bit more difficult would be a hybrid type of situation. That takes a lot more coordination, and some cities have moved to that, but in terms of just broadcasting what you're seeing today rather than the still photos and the production value that Red88 provides, that should not be an issue.
Okay. Yeah, the reason I bring that up is at least the few cities where I've happened to tune in on their council meetings, I think we might be one of the few that have the format that we have right now. I haven't looked at the school districts meeting recently, but I think in the few that I've looked at, maybe half a year ago or before, I think you can see all the board members as they're speaking, so. I mean, it still doesn't, in my opinion, doesn't replace the same effect of seeing someone in person, obviously, but I think if we're going to be staying remotely for the time being, that's something I would like to see changed.
Okay.
But as for returning to chambers, I think I'm looking towards, you know, you, Mr. Cook, and kind of like the guidance of, you know, how are we? How exactly are we determining when is the right time to go back? I know that was a hard question to answer at the last meeting. It could maybe always be a hard question to answer at any given time, but if if we truly are following the data and the science, I think at least I would like to know what that threshold looks like.
Sure, your findings and your resolutions speak to the finding that there is still substantial community spread in Los Angeles County, hence one of the findings that's would meet the requirement of continuing remote work. If, for example, we went to low community spread for a period of time, I think that would be a decision of the council at that point to say, okay, if there's low community spread and it has been sustained, that may not necessarily meet the finding requirements to continue virtual meetings.
And that low would be determined by?
That low, the low we've been using has been determined not, no longer by the state, because the state doesn't do that anymore. That's according to the Centers for Disease Control, the CDC.
Oh, so that's the federal level?
Hmm.
Okay. All right, I guess that maybe brings up a bit more other questions, because because I know we've always been following sort of like the county. The county is our public health official, so is it because the county is not really providing much direction in terms of defining or classifying that risk? Or the low?
In terms, in terms of indoor space requirements, they do provide guidance. They aren't, obviously, they are not prohibiting indoor gatherings or indoor activities, but they are putting some requirements on there, and some, some entities are requiring things like proof of vaccination, testing requirements, and other prerequisites. We're a little bit more confined as a public agency with an open public meeting to provide those same conditions, like proof of vaccination or a negative COVID test, whereas other venues are, so. The county, the county public health has said, you know, based on doing as many mitigation measures as you can take, you can have meetings in person, but so there's nothing, there's not a strict prohibition by LA County Public Health, but these are the measurements that we've been using on a go-forward basis for the last 18 months or so.
Yeah, so for me, I think what I would say is, I would like for us collectively to determine what that target should be. I don't know if it's a quantifiable metric, or is this purely subjective, like just the, do we feel safe in that space kind of question? Because we don't know how long COVID is going to last. I think that's probably part of the concern. Are we continuing this mode of of public meetings in this format for an unforeseeable future, or are we saying, hey, we feel safe when we reach point X? I don't know how you, how do you define that threshold? Or are we still reverting back to, well, let's just review this every 30 days, but when we review it, I just want to know what are we measuring that progress by? I think that's what, what I'm trying to get a better understanding of. I'd rather follow the data and the science to make this decision. I'd rather not us respond to people and say, well, we just generally don't feel good about returning in person, as opposed to saying, hey, when we exceed a of community transmission, or we sink below that, then we're going to go back. I think that's where I stand. But I have no problem, you know, continuing this for now, but I would like those questions to be answered. That's all. Thank you.
Yeah, for the record, I think Councilmember Viscara just joined us. So, thank you, Councilmember Mann. I will go to Councilmember Viscara. Are you ready to speak on this item, or should I wait? I guess I'll go to Councilmember Chavez first, and then maybe come back to Councilmember Viscara.
Hey, thank you. I do actually have a couple of questions before I make my comment. One question would be, if we do return live, will council members have the choice to remain remote?
You would have to follow the same Brown Act rules as pre-COVID and pre-executive orders, meaning that you could, a majority of the council must remain in the council chambers. A council member could, could be remote, but they would have to post their location of where they, where they are participating. They must allow public access to that location as well.
And to follow up on William's questions, I'm a little confused by the term community spread. I think that's what you mentioned, Mr. Cook. Is that the LA County community spread or the Temple City community spread? Because I think those two are different. If you look at the numbers.
I won't, I won't get into kind of the nuance of it, but it is what the CDC is defining for every county in the United States as to what is the amount of incident of infection and what that defines as as community spread. Now...
I think, I think we all know that there are different community spreads in different communities. And the last time I looked, Temple City was doing pretty well with their numbers, especially their vaccinations and the amount of people who are actually contracting COVID, let's say, versus other communities in Los Angeles County. Is that not correct?
We are doing, we have one of the highest vaccination rates in LA County, and in terms of the growth of our, of our infections, it's one of the better ones in LA County as well.
Well, I guess the point I'm trying to make is that, in reality, what we're facing here in Temple City certainly is a lot different than, let's say, other communities in LA County or the state for that, for instance, so. I think that should, should play into the factors as well. So those are for my, that's it for my questions. My comments are, I'm actually prepared to go back to live meetings. You know, we have asked staff to return to City Hall. I'm thinking to myself, I can't go to a meeting twice a month when we have staff going, some, some of them going five times a week to City Hall, engaging with members of the public. I don't see the fairness in that at all. And also, I don't know if anybody has, if ever, I think everybody's been in the chambers, but if you haven't, you need to go in there and see what a tremendous job that staff has done to mitigate the dangers of this virus. I mean, there are the barriers, the partitions are up, the seating has already been determined. And to be honest with you, unless we have some special event, how many people do we really get at our council meetings? Five, six, seven, maybe at the most? Which I think our, the size of our chambers can certainly accommodate that. So I just don't see, to me, a compelling reason to continue with the way we're doing it. And add to that, the last thing, and that is the difficulties that we have been experiencing for the last couple of months in the transmission of these meetings. I'll be honest with you, in the closed session, I couldn't, I could hardly understand any, what anyone was saying. And that is not a very good way of running a meeting, not only for those who are participating, but also for those who are listening in. And so, all things considered, I have no problem whatsoever in going back to live meetings.
Okay, I'm on the...
That's all I have to say. Mayor Yu, thank you very much for the time.
Thank you, Councilmember Chavez.
The tablet, I'm good.
Councilmember Viscara, are you still setting up? Are you ready to? Oh, sounds like he's on the phone. So we're speaking on the possible, possibility of continuing with our telly or remote council meeting or consistent with Assembly Bill 361, or go back to regular, regular council meetings, so. Councilmember Viscara, you want to speak on this? You're on mute?
I do, with my mug. Let me get it.
I think you signed on in two different sessions. One is mute, one is not mute.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. My computer is picking up the room that I'm not in. And the tablet has me on, on has me with the mic. This thing has been doing this a bit. Short story, you can hear me, right?
Sir.
Yes.
Okay. My, my, my preference is to stay virtual at least one more month. We were, we were on month to month. And frankly, that's, that's where I'd like to stay. I find it much more convenient and, and easy to, to handle, except when I have blitches like this. But I'm able to surmount them, so I don't think I want to hold forth for very long. I just wanted to make that point that I, I think I prefer to stay on virtual at least for one more month.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Viscara. And Mayor Pro Tem Sternquist, any questions or comments on this item?
Question? Right. Did you say LA County and moderate, or? What would you call, moderate? Or?
Yeah, according to the CDC, they are, there is still significant...
I didn't hear a word that she said. Can you repeat that?
I remember Tim, would you mind repeating what you just said?
So, I don't know where the issue is. Can you hear me?
Now we can hear you.
Well, the issue is on the city's end, because I'm not on mute. But I've tried to second a few things, and it hasn't worked. But anyway. So Brian, we are on moderate level. What does the spread need to be with, to get to low?
Yeah, there is, there is, there is a case rate number for 100,000 on top, off the top of my head. I don't know. Maybe Mr. Arizumi, who's been our COVID person, may know off the top of his head, or he can find it, but I'm not sure off the top of my head. Mr. Arizumi, do you know?
I don't know off the top of my head, but I can look at it. I recall prior to last year's increase, I think they were talking about seven... prior to last year's, um, increase, uh, I think they were talking about seven per one hundred thousand. I, I think was the number of, uh, of the, uh, spread rate.
And, and what is the moderate?
It would be something we'd have to look up, Mayor Protem.
Trying to gauge, you know, how long would it take to get to the level down?
That's hard to know, but the trend over the last, uh, several weeks has been very positive. So I, depending on what's happening, and there's a sub of Delta that's out, they're, they're exploring in England right now. But you, you could probably see low transmission rates sometime in December. Maybe, maybe a little bit earlier.
To age so that shoot. You know, say, okay, well, we're going to do this for another thirty days. But at the end of that thirty days, if we're maybe in between low and moderate, where there's some significant reduction, maybe even by half ways to get to the lower end, then I'd be comfortable, um, going back. I, I think that it's difficult for a number of reasons. I wouldn't want to go back with even one of my comfortable, just because, you know, William has young children, they can't be vaccinated. Hybrid is difficult.
I'm not on mute.
I'm on, what happened?
You're okay, Mayor Protem.
I think it's, it's so different for each, um, one of us. So I'm, I'm more than for another thirty days and, and using that, um, number from the CDC, whatever that may be, even if we were, you know, fifty percent down from moderate on our way to lower, I think I would be comfortable. And maybe that is just thirty days with the progress that we're making and the vaccination rate that we currently have in Temple City. That's basically it.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Uh, as for me, I, you know, I, I, I think they're merits, uh, both, both ways. And, um, I was, uh, I'm comfortable in extending it another thirty days. And, um, perhaps asked, would like, uh, Mr. City Manager and staff to look into maybe the metrics that, um, that we should be using from a more perhaps scientific point of view. Uh, in some sense, I, you know, um, I'm saying that not because I also work for the county, but I do listen to the Board Supervisor hearing every Tuesday. And I figure that, um, the county public health is the one we relook to for local um, health issues. And then, um, the Board Supervisor has not, um, begun meeting in person quite yet. And, and I take it that as a, uh, as an example for the rest of us to follow. But I do want to, um, piggyback on the Councilmember Mann's point. Cause, but I do notice after AB 361, the County of Los Angeles did switch over to a format whereby the public can see the supervisors when they speak. So, it perhaps is not a legal requirement, but I, I, I thought that that may not be a bad, bad idea. Uh, now that we, um, uh, under the AB 361, we also allow the public to see us. And maybe that is one step towards getting more public, uh, participation. So those are my comments. So with that, uh, I am ready for a motion. Anyone?
Jeremy Vincent.
I can hear you now.
I, I, I still can't hear Cindy. Is, is there anybody else having that problem? Or is it just me? It keeps breaking up.
She, she's breaking up a little bit.
The, the first sentence, I, we couldn't hear. There's the second sentence we, I can hear, at least for me.
Well, maybe someone else can make the motion in case it goes away.
Well, I'll, I'll make a simplistic motion, and that is that we continue virtual meetings at least for another thirty days and reassess at that point.
Okay, and, and if I could say, uh, just add adopt, uh, resolution number twenty-one, five, five, six, two. Do we have a second? So Mayor Protem, second. So, uh, Mayor, uh, Madam Clark, uh, City.
Mayor, you can ask a question. Um, would, would that motion entail, uh, the comment about changing the format? Of our teleconference of, of our current meeting for, from the public side? Where they're going to see what we're seeing?
I would include that.
All right, thank you. So, Mayor Protem, you, you also second that, right? Okay, um, Madam Clark, roll call, vote please.
Councilmember Chavez?
No.
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sternquist?
And here is Cindy.
Yes, now, now we can hear you. Uh, for me, it's yes as well, so. So the motion carried, uh, we will continue meeting in this format, uh, for thirty days. And then, um, hopefully we can switch to, uh, format whereby the, the public can see us next time. Okay, all right, thank you. Moving on to the next item, which is discussion regarding proposed program guidelines for the seventy-two hour parking restriction exemption. Uh, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Yu, members of the council. This item is being brought back to you tonight after some general direction from the council when this item was introduced several meetings ago, to provide you with a couple of things. One, uh, there was asked for a survey, and so Mr. Arizumi surveyed almost all of the, uh, San Gabriel Valley cities. Not all of them, but pretty close to all of the San Gabriel Valley cities regarding, uh, any exemptions past the seventy-two hours. That survey is attached for your review. Um, in addition, Mr. Arizumi has done a good job of providing some guidelines in which to implement such a program. Um, and, and I'll, if, if I miss anything, Mr. Arizumi will step in. But, um, the main part, components of it is that only residents with a overnight parking permit would be eligible for the seventy-two hour parking permit exemption. Um, and a demonstrated need to public, to, uh, park in, in, on a public street. There are other requirements that are in the staff report, but that is the reason why we implemented that is because we felt that was the, the key measure and the key way to actually control if the council were to provide, uh, a, an exemption, in this case, or what we were proposed twice a year. Because we have vetted those who have overnight parking permits. So they, we know they have a reason to park on the street. They already have a permit, they would just be, have to add twice a year, the times that they do go over the seventy-two hours, an additional placard that's, that's spelled out in the staff report. So from a tracking and a implementation standpoint, rather than having it as a free-for-all for anybody to do overnight parking past seventy-two hours, we would recommend just, uh, if the council were to um, move forward with this type of, uh, program, that it would be limited to just those who already have overnight parking permits. Um, some of the other conditions that we laid out are in the staff report, and Mr. Arizumi or I and I are here for any questions you may have.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Cook. And so we'll go around, um, asking a council member if they have questions for staff, starting with Councilmember Mann. Any questions for staff?
I, I have no questions. Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Viscara, any questions for staff?
Brian, could you repeat that again, what you just said?
Uh, sure, you know what? I'll let air Mr. Arizumi because he's, he, he can, he can kind of repeat what I just said as well.
Thank you, sir. So, the program that staff is proposing is to implement, uh, if council chooses uh, seventy-two hour permit, seventy-two hour parking exemption permit program. And the persons or the residents that would be eligible under that program would be the residents that currently hold an annual overnight parking permit. And this was selected because those residents that have the annual permit have already demonstrated insufficient parking on their property. And it is a way that we can track and validate their need to park on the street. Uh, with the permit though, we were trying to figure out a sensible number. And staff is proposing that, uh, a resident that has a valid annual permit can apply for two uh, seventy-two hour parking exemption permits per year. Uh, and that can be up for discussion with council. We're also proposing that the period of the permit that is valid is for a period of six days. Uh, and that was selected because that's two seventy-two hour periods. And also, the permit cannot be issued, uh, concurrently. Uh, there has to be a three-month separation between the permits being issued. And, and again, this was selected because, um, there is no other way to balance it without having some type of program that tracks that. Uh, if we do a free-for-all kind of an on-the-honor system, um, parking staff would not have the ability to cite because they don't know when that period began and if that vehicle's had, uh, an exemption prior to that contact with that vehicle.
And, and no new person could get an, uh, an exemption?
Anybody that has a valid overnight parking permit, um, an annual permit would be eligible to apply for the exemption permit.
Okay. Uh, no further questions?
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Chavez. Any questions?
Um, what is the rationale or purpose for this new law?
It was a request, um, that was made of us from town, from, uh, Mayor Protem to.
No, I, I'm not asking where the request came from. What is, what is this new law? What's purpose is it to serve? What is the, what is it going to? What, I mean, why have it? What, what's the reason for it? Not who brought it up, but what is the overall reason or purpose for this?
I'll let Mr. Arizumi chime in at any time, but, um, the idea is that for people who have overnight parking, uh, permits, they have demonstrated they have insufficient parking with, on their property. Um, this provides them with, uh, for lack of a better term, an additional opportunity to park for a period beyond the normal seventy-two hours and provides them with, for lack of a better term, an additional, uh, benefit or amenity related to parking on the street. But that.
Well, 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 wait a minute. They, they already have a parking permit, so they don't need an additional seventy-two hours. They have a parking permit to already park on the street.
Yeah, so.
Wasn't the rationale behind this for people who are going out of town and don't have somebody to move their car so they don't get a ticket?
Correct. It was for those residents that weren't able to return home because they're on vacation or out of town for work or for whatever reason, and did not have someone available that can readily move their vehicle so that it's not parked seventy-two hours consecutively in the same location. And so staff was given direction to develop some type of program to potentially provide that exemption that a resident that is out of town for a period exceeding seventy-two hours can remain at, at that location for seventy-two hours or longer and not be subject to being cited or towed.
Right, thank you. And so I thought it was interesting to note in the report that the thirty surrounding cities around us, none of them have such an exemption, not one. And I'm thinking, how can that be true? Why, why is that, why is that so? And then I start thinking to myself, I know why. Because if I put a placard on my car that says, I'm going to basically not be able to move it, i.e. be out of town, isn't every burglar in town going to see that and say, gee, guess what? These people are no longer in town. Maybe I should burglarize this home. Isn't that, I mean, burglars aren't stupid. I mean, if we put a sign on your car that says you're not going to be home, guess what's going to happen? I mean, I, I just, I mean, that's, that just makes no sense to me whatsoever. So, but again, I digress. I'm more commenting now than asking questions. And, and I'm sorry, Mayor Yu, I, I sometimes get off on that tangent. So let me ask my questions. First of all, how will it be determined that a resident does not have anyone available to move the vehicle? Are we just going to rely on their representation? Or, I mean, how is that going to be, uh, you know, resolved?
It'll basically be on their, their statement and submitting the application stating that their vehicle needs to be parked on the street for a period of excess of seventy-two hours.
But, but I thought in the report, not only do they have to show that, but they have to also show that there is no one available to move the vehicle. Correct?
I don't recall including anything of, of that nature. Uh, one of the requirements.
Look at it. Maybe I got it wrong. It says here, let's see, um, residents with an annual overnight, uh, let's see, permits may only be requested and approved uh, for the following reason. This is, this is two A. Residents will be out of town for a prolonged period of time and does not have any person available to move the vehicle.
Correct. So by them submitting the application and, uh, they are stating that the vehicle will be parked on the street and there's no one available to move the vehicle.
So again, my question then is, how are we going to, uh, follow up on that? We're just going to rely, I'm assuming, just on their representation, correct?
Correct, which is why we limited the number of permits that we would propose to.
I, I understand that. Okay, all right. But, but again, no one's, I mean, they're, they're going to say that, of course, okay. What if there is no room in front of the residents to park their car? Then, does that basically eliminate their right to do so?
That can be up for discussion. Uh, staff proposed that because if the vehicle is parked on the street in excess of seventy-two hours, it does impact, uh, other neighbors within the neighborhoods. And so if there is a vehicle that is going to be parked beyond that seventy-two hour period, staff felt that it should be adjacent to their property.
And, and I don't disagree with that because that's part of the reason why we did away with the, uh, um, relaxation of the overnight parking. It's good people were complaining that, uh, people were abusing that and parking in front of their, in front of their homes as well. Um, what happens during street sweeping? Because I noticed that that's not going to be an exemption. They still wouldn't need to move it during a street sweeping, correct?
Correct. In, in our current proposal, staff is, uh, including the seventy-two hour parking restriction as well as any time limit parking restrictions such as two-hour, one-hour parking. Uh, we did not include street sweeping, uh, because, uh, street sweeping is something that is greater and has a more significant impact on the neighborhood if it's not swept. And so again, that, that can be up for discussion in any direction from council. Uh, we can amend the program.
No, I, I, I think that's a good thing. My question is, if they, if they have to move it for street sweeping, then why can't they move it for other reasons? I, I don't, I don't quite understand that. So they're, they're, they're obviously going, somebody's going to have to move that far if it's a street sweeping day. Uh, this exemption won't apply. They'll still get a ticket, correct?
Correct, as, as proposed, yes.
Um, this, oh, this is a question I had that came up when the streets, does a, does a disabled placard allow a resident to park even on street sweeping days?
No.
Okay, so, so they, so even, uh, uh, with a disabled placard, they have to move their vehicles?
Correct. And anywhere parking is prohibited, uh, whether it's during a period of time or through cur marking. Correct. And anywhere parking is prohibited, uh, whether it's during a period of time or through curbs markings, uh, a disabled placard does not provide that exemption.
Um, do you, are you, I probably should have asked this before, and I don't mean to put you in a, a, a tough position, and if you don't know the answer, I understand. How many of these tickets have we given in the past twelve months?
Seventy-two hour, usually seventy-two hour, we impound the vehicle or, or store the vehicle.
So we don't even give a ticket? We just tow the vehicle after seventy-two hours?
Correct.
Wow. And how many cars have we towed?
I don't have exact numbers. Um, it's not a significantly high number. Uh, during our law enforcement summary meeting, we do provide, uh, numbers of impounds per month. And the impounds can range anywhere from five impounds to twelve impounds per month. And those also include any impounds that were done as a result of a traffic, uh, stop. So if a vehicle was being driven by an unlicensed driver, suspended license, that vehicle would get towed, uh, potentially some vehicles that are involved in traffic collisions if the owner is not coherent and cannot give permission, th- those will be included in that. So, uh, anywhere from four to twelve a month, depending on who's out there enforcing it.
Do we tow four to twelve vehicles a month pursuant to this statute?
Not necessarily to this one, just overall, we tow.
But I'm, I'm talking about this statute, because, because this is the one that's before us, and we're trying to determine whether this is necessary or not. Part of my thought process is that, is it, is it truly a problem? Is it necessary to have legislation in this area? And so I'm trying to get an idea of how many tickets that were actually, well, I guess we're not even giving tickets, which is kind of surprising. It seems to me a little harsh that we wouldn't give a warning to somebody. We simply just tow their vehicle if it's there for seventy-two hours. And, and this, this applies also to those who have an overnight parking. They still have to move the car in seventy-two hours, correct?
Correct. So the seventy-two hour period begins once we observe and put that warning on the vehicle. So a vehicle can be parked in a neighborhood for three or four days before a resident calls into a report that a vehicle is parked on the street and hasn't moved. Uh, once we go out there and red-tag the vehicle with the warning, that is when the seventy-two hour period begins.
So we're not really being proactive in the, in the, uh, in the, um, enforcement of this. Sounds like to me like we're being more reactive and we don't actually take any action until somebody calls to complain that the vehicle has been parked there for a while and hasn't moved. Is that, that correct?
Correct. Most of our complaints, uh, for seventy-two hour or the abandoned vehicles is through complaints from residents. Uh, if staff observes a vehicle, let's say on sweeping route, or now that overnight, uh, enforcement's implemented again, if there's a vehicle that's consecutively parked for two weeks in the same location and starting to build up debris and cobwebs around the vehicle, then in, in that situation, they may proactively red-tag the vehicle. Uh, but most of the situations regarding a seventy-two hour red tag are based off of complaints.
And do we receive a lot of complaints for this, Brian, or does anybody keep stats on this? Uh, how many complaints we actually receive, uh?
We, we try to log it in our request tracker. Um, during COVID, I think we received more just because a lot of the parking, uh, restrictions were suspended, uh, from enforcement. And so we were getting a lot of complaints about people parking in front of someone else's houses for extended periods of time during COVID.
I think, I think we need to kind of throw all the COVID numbers out. I don't know if that was a, a true reflection of, uh, of, of the way things are, but, uh, um, let's say pre-COVID, did we, I mean, wh- what were the numbers like? I mean, is there anything that, uh, um, you know?
Yeah, I, I don't have that information at hand. Uh, also.
Apologize for not asking ahead of time, but.
No problem. Also, we're not the only ones that would receive the complaint. Uh, some complaints may go directly to the sheriff's department uh, during our off-hours or if we don't have any bit available, uh, someone may call the sheriff's department and they would go out and red-tag the vehicle as well.
But, and, and, and so when you say red-tag, they basically put a red tag on the vehicle and then that's when the seventy-two hour period starts to run.
Correct.
And then I guess that's, I guess that's the rationale for then towing it because basically they've kind of put on prior notice. So, it's not like we just go tow it after seventy-two hours.
Correct. And that's where the vehicle code states that a, any vehicle parked consecutively in the same location for seventy-two hours or more is considered abandoned.
And, and my last question, and maybe this is more for Greg, what, what impact do you think this, this, these new ADU rules and, and, and what is the, the latest one? Is that? Can't remember now. Is it SB nine or what, which is the one we're, we're grappling with now? Okay, so, so what effect is that going to have on our street parking issues, if any, um? Especially as it relates to this, it sounds to me like that's gonna be even a bigger problem than, than, uh, maybe this is going to be, because if I remember correctly, um, they don't, they don't have to provide onsite parking any longer. They can keep putting these buildings up and not worry about the onsite parking. I- is that correct?
That is correct.
And, and, and at some point, we're going to have to address the overflow parking from that, I would think as well. But I guess that's for a different day, just, yeah. Okay, well, I'm sorry for taking so long. It's just that I had a lot of, this, this thing really kind of got my mind thinking about a lot of things. And really, at the end of the day, I mean, I hate to see someone put a sticker on their car that basically tells the world, I'm gonna be out of town for a few days. Um, I'm a little concerned about that. Um, you know, and I don't know how we overcome that, other than maybe just keeping a in-house tally on that and, and alerting whoever's out there giving tickets or looking at these, um, a roll sheet or something maybe that they can look at rather than than having the owner put a tag on their car saying that, you know, I'm, I'm gonna leave this here for a while and, and primarily the reason, as we know, is because they need it because they're gonna be out of town and they can't move it, and they don't want to get a ticket, so. Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you, councilmember Chavez. Uh, Mayor Protam, straight quest. Any questions?
Uh, questions. Thank you. I'm sorry, I have to keep moving. Um, Eliana says in order to keep my, um, sound so that you can hear it. So, I have to keep shutting off the videos so you don't get nauseated as I move. But anyway, I do have a couple of questions. One is that, um, do we relax seventy-two hour parking when we do it for the holidays?
No.
Okay, so that stays in place?
Correct.
So, alright, let me just check that off. Um, I think that was the only question.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Protam. Yeah, um, actually, I have a, a lot of similar questions as councilmember Chavez, so they've all been asked and answered, so I don't need to ask anymore. So at this time, I'll open up public comments. Um, so I will ask any member of the public watching at home to call in at the Zoom number. Once you are on, the city clerk will make sure that you're able to speak. Um, Madam City Clerk, are there any public callers offering comments on this item?
Mayor Yu, we have one caller, and I, uh, requested that they unmute if they wish to speak.
So, uh, have you received any email, um, comments?
Mayor Yu, there are no email requests to speak.
Okay. So we'll give, we'll give it a little bit longer for anybody who wants to call in. Not hearing any more from the public, and the reasonable time has been given. Uh, I will close public comment and bring it back for, to the council for final discussion. Uh, starting with councilmember men, any final comments or questions?
Thank you, Mayor Yu. I, I did, one question that come up in my mind, just to clarify, the seventy-two hour rule is actually from the state, right? That's from the state vehicle code?
Correct.
Okay. Alright, so, uh, in terms of just comments, um, I, I was trying to look for, I guess, what new information emerged between the last time we discussed this till now? Um, and, and I think the most significant one for me is the, the survey of the other cities. Um, and I think councilmember Chavez alluded to this, but no, no other city has the seventy-two hour parking exemption. Uh, secondly, um, I think even at our last meeting, we, we, some of us had asked about the statistics related to how often is something like this really needed? And at least based on what I hear from, from staff's, um, experience, it seems like there is what I would consider to be a statistically insignificant number of cases related to this particular problem. Um, thirdly, in, in reading what staff has proposed, I mean, I, I think I appreciate what, what staff is trying to do, which is trying to craft something that is sensible within within the parameters of what our current practices are and what we're trying to achieve through new law like this. Um, but it just reads in, in a very onerous way. Um, there's like these exceptions, there's these conditions. Um, I read it a couple of times before I figured, before I really got a grasp of, um, what this was trying to say. So, my, my conclusion is I, I don't think we need this. Um, I, I guess I've, I've no other way of saying it. Um, yeah, I think that, that's, that's all I have to say. I, I don't think it's necessary.
Okay, uh, thank you. Um, councilmember Viscar, any com- uh, fin- any final questions or comments from you?
Uh, yeah, I appreciate, uh, both, uh, councilmember Chavez's, uh, points as well as, as, uh, councilmember Mans. And, and councilmember Chavez briefly hit on it, but I think it's something that the, the, the issue of, uh, SB nine, especially after having gotten a tutorial from, from Scott, I can see that that will come, could come to play if it isn't overturned in the state. That SB nine, uh, will, will definitely play a part in here. And, uh, I do, I don't see an advantage to, to proceeding. Those are my comments.
So, uh, just want, just want to make sure I am hearing it correctly, councilmember Viscar. You're saying you don't see any benefit in proceeding with this um, allowance, seventy-two hour?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, thanks. Um, councilmember Chavez, any final comments or questions?
Uh, no, I think I've taken a fair amount of the time on this tonight. Uh, you know, for me, after going through this, um, you know, the bottom line is that, you know, if, if, in fact, this were properly administered, I, you know, obviously, it's not gonna really increase the number of vehicles on the street. Uh, I think we have some bigger fish to fry down the road, especially with these, this new legislation coming to us. Um, but at the same time, I, and, and again, I appreciate what staff is trying to do here, trying to form something that really no other city has formed, and I, and it's a good, I think it's a, a good effort, but, but I, I tend to agree that, you know, it's just creating legislation where we really don't need it at this point. Um, and again, I think there's a bigger issue out there that may encompass some of these things down the road as well that we may have to address. Uh, but at this time, uh, I don't see making a special exemption for this seventy-two hour, uh, parking. Um, it seems that, uh, most people have, uh, uh, been able to, uh, overcome this and, uh, it's really not something that's, that's a major issue in our city at this point, so. Um, thank you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor Protam, questions or final comments?
Yeah, I didn't get a chance to comment. Um, well, I'm not gonna die on the hill for this. You know, I did bring this forward because I see it as a problem in our city. I see it as a problem going forth with SB nine. And I'm just gonna share a couple of examples. Um, you know, the idea that twenty-nine or thirty other cities in, um, that were surveyed do not do something to resolve this issue means nothing to me because I guess I've served on enough regional boards such as, you know, let me just give you a couple. The, the, the mosquito district, we have a really strong board that has done some really innovative things where there hasn't been any ordinance before. But there was a need, someone brought it forward, and we worked through the issues and we made it work for the city. Um, an example, I'm chair of Foothill Transit's executive board now. For the past, I think it's been eight years when I was first on that board and they brought the idea of doing electric buses. And there was no one, not thirty cities, but no one in the United States was doing electric buses at the time. And transit through much discussion, um, you know, vetting out the process of, should we do this? Should we not? Should we be innovative? Should we be a leader in this area? Decided that it was the good thing to do. So, Foothill Transit was the first a local agency, much smaller than Metro, in the San Gabriel Valley that made a huge difference by initiating something that they thought would be best for the people that it served. So I look at that and I think Metro, Orange County, um, San Diego, Kansas City, every other agency in the US has now gone to electric buses. Had Foothill Transit said, well, you know, we're not gonna do it because there's no other transit agency doing this, you know, would have really been a setback, not just for Foothill Transit, but for transit altogether. Because now the state has come down and said by twenty forty, first it was twenty thirty, but they extended it, every transit agency is going to have to be all-electric. Um, you see that with just things that the state is saying, okay, within a certain amount of time, there's not gonna be any more um, CNG or gas-using vehicles made. All started with seeing a problem and trying to make it better. Um, you know, so, so I don't have a problem with Temple City being innovative and letting other cities follow. I don't think we always need to be the followers. But with that being said, um, I do see, uh, you know, after you get a notice, and if you're not there, your car gets towed away, and it's a minimum. I think, Brian, you could probably help me with this, Arizumi, um, of at least six hundred dollars if convenience, to get, get your car out once it's been towed. I mean, that in itself is not friendly to our constituents when we have a way that hopefully we can help them out. Um, also parking, if you have a little sticker on the car, really, probably the only people that are gonna know that are your immediate neighbors that maybe you tell to keep an eye on the property because these are not people that are parking necessarily right in front of their house. They are parking somewhere on the street because they don't have a parking garage. They don't have a place to park right in front of their home. I mean, so a burglar would have to be lucky, I guess, to guess whose car was left there and what house on the street of many homes or apartments the car belonged to. So I don't see if that is a viable reason to, you know, not move forward with this also. Um, let's see, SB nine. If I think about what the state did with the eviction moratorium and we look at all the problems that that caused for so many different landlords only to have that whole eviction moratorium thrown out and now rewritten. Thrown out and now rewritten from what we initially had discussed, which was. You know, you need to change this, you need to make this fair to, um, you know, property owners. There is ways to fix it, maybe it's a simple word, but now. That whole eviction moratorium written, rewritten to accommodate what we discussed early on. And did nothing about. So I'm just saying that down the road, if we don't address this. The state's gonna come up and say, you know, that seventy-two hour rule, it doesn't apply anymore. Because people are gonna have to park somewhere and where are they gonna park? They're gonna park on the street. So basically, that's my soapbox. Um, I mean, I don't think this is going to be supportive. I just think there are many reasons at why it should be. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Bratton. And I do appreciate Mayor Bratton, you trying to uh help out the residents, I understand the intention, but. You know, um, when this issue first came up, I too have a little bit of a hard time. Seeing the need for a legislation, so in general, I, um. I, I don't gen- generally support legislations that have very minimal uh application. And in particular, if we're still gonna enforce street sweeping. Uh, for, because it's also in the public's interest for the street to be swept, then. I, I think will render having this exemption moot, uh, because they're gonna get a ticket anyway for not moving for. Um, uh, street sweeping, so the only time this will work if uh the street sweeping is also uh exempt. Um, but. Knowing that, um, hearing that, um, the, the city, even though we do tow their car. We actually will not, we don't go on particularly looking for the car and, and only react on a more of a reactive mode. I feel that that probably would give the residents enough, um, um. Enough notice, um, and, and I think, um, Councilmember Chavez brought a very good point. Uh, the little sticker or marker on the, on the car and because these folks don't have, um. Parking necessarily, uh, driveways or garages. And the issue becomes that they're actually parking in front of somebody else's house. And, um, so that may send the wrong signal, so that is definitely, in my opinion, a, a concern. And there have been discussions about SB nine and I think, uh, having the ability to allow people to park more on the street. Only exacerbated what SD, SB nine would bring to us, uh, even though I do think it's kind of a separate issue, so. So I, I don't know if, um, if I, if I see the necessity of this legislation, although I appreciate. Um, uh, Mayor Bratton's intention and I think staff were trying to work out a, a good compromise.
And Mayor?
Yes.
I, I just wanna say, I mean, I really do appreciate. Vetting this out and the discussion and, and I think that. One of the things I so appreciate about this council is that. We can listen to one another and disagree and yet respect what each other votes on, on things like this, so. You know, I just want everybody to know that whatever the council decides, I am happy. To, you know, vote. For something that the majority feel is the right thing to do.
Okay. All right, thank you. Um, do we, um, need a motion, uh, Mr. City Attorney? Because the, the, this item is ready for discussion. And I guess if the direction is to, um. Uh, entertain having the, the exemption, then you will bring back some kind of legislation, so. Do we even need a vote based on our discussion tonight?
If, if the council doesn't want to make any changes, then no, no motion or vote would even be needed. Uh, you could just by consensus close the matter and move on to the next item.
Okay, um. Mayor Prostem, uh, Protem Sternquist, do you want a vote or do you think there's enough of a discussion of consensus?
No, I mean, I, I've heard from the four of you and for your reasons, you know, collectively, you all pretty much seem to be on a much. Different page than I am and, uh, you know, I, I respect that, so I'm fine.
Okay, so, thank you, uh, Mayor Bratton and thank you everyone for the discussion, so. Let's move on to our next item, uh, which is new business and there is none. Uh, next item is update from Mr. City Manager, Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor Yu and members of the council, um, uh, um, what I'm about to bring forward to you actually was brought to me by. Uh, Mayor Protem Sternquist, so thank you to her for bringing this forward. As you know, redistricting is happening throughout California. And there are two big meetings in the next couple, in the next week, related to the County of Los Angeles supervisory uh boundaries. Um, one tomorrow and we'll post that on social media and then one on Wednesday, we'll send you the links to the redistricting website. Um, what they are doing right now is they are proposing what are called communities of interest, so during the census. When they go through redistricting process, there's a redistricting commission, there are statisticians and other demographers that assist. Uh, a, a public agency in defining what are communities of interest. Uh, the, the link that I'll forward to you could show you where potentially some things are going. Uh, without advocating a staff or anything like that, um, but it does. Build different communities of interest which would seem to make the supervisory districts different than they are today. Um, so that's something to note, uh, for all of you, I'll make sure, um, after this meeting tonight, I'll. I'll copy and paste and send you what we'll be sending to on social media tomorrow, so the community is aware that. They're getting to the final end of this process for redistricting and again, one of those big components is. Defining communities of interest. Now, that is usually a very controversial, uh, topic in many communities, uh, as redistricting goes on. Um, you can take a look at the website and you can see what, uh, at least some preliminary maps of what are defined as communities of, of interest. And how that may in fact change some of the supervo- super, supervisory boundaries. For the L.A. County Board of Supervisors. Um, other than that, that was my main item for tonight, sir, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you from Mayor Protem for bringing, bringing this to my attention to see today.
Okay, next item is update from City Attorney, um. Mr. Murphy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to say to the council, you'll notice that tonight we had, um. Distinctly different processes to meet our AB three sixty-one requirements that we had at the last meeting. We're going to continue to refine those as we watch what's going on around the state. Unfortunately, three sixty-one was written very vaguely and we wanted to start out by being cautious, but as we. We follow along with sort of the general pattern of what's going on with the state, uh, these remote meetings will be more smooth over your. Your next month of holding them. Um, also, as you'll, you'll recall from the past, November is a time when we will begin bringing a lot of legislative updates to you. Uh, analyses of bills that the governor signed in the last, uh. Eleven days, uh, are starting to come out and we'll bring the bills of note to you. Either through my report or through a separate action or a, a separate report, uh, by city staff. Thank you very much, sir, that's it for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. So next item is council reports regarding ad hoc or standing committee meetings. Do we have any reports?
Uh, Mayor Yu, I don't have a report, but more of a question for maybe our city manager, uh, do we have a, um. A meeting scheduled with the school district anytime soon, um, I know that we were going to set that, but I haven't heard anything more from anybody.
I believe it's next Thursday, yeah, I have it on my calendar.
Wait, wait, it's next Thursday, I. Do you have that on your calendar, William? When, when was that decided?
I think it may have been decided at your last meeting.
It's, it's not on the calendar, but we, we alluded to the end of October as a potential meeting date, but. I don't think it was ever officially.
No, I don't, I haven't gotten any notice about next Thursday and remember Thursdays I teach.
Well, that's, we're gonna have to change that, so we'll, 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 we'll fix that around, well, um, Iliana, we'll, uh. We'll, uh, outreach to the school district and so we'll see if we can get something either last week of October or first week of November.
Okay, thank you.
Is that a meeting with the full board and the full council?
No, that's just the standing committee.
Okay.
Uh, any other reports? Um, if not, then I think we can bring up, uh, Councilmember Viscara and, um, the art, uh, ad hoc meeting. That we have had on September twenty-seventh, uh, with staff and our two, um. I guess volunteer, um, um, uh, committee members.
Didn't we discuss that already?
Uh, we actu- uh, I thought we had a Zoom meeting. Uh, actually, we talked about maybe refinement and I thought that we were supposed to bring that back in, in a week or two, so.
Brian wasn't ready to bring it back yet. We, we did have the, the, the meeting and the next one was, he, he, in fact, now he's preparing to bring something back to the council. And, and there were some issues that, that needed addressing, that's what they were doing. They're looking, we, we can't really speak too much to it because the information on the financing. Location and those kinds of things were still being developed.
Right.
So I don't think there's much to report on.
Yeah, but I think it survives to, um, perhaps report to the council that we didn't meet. Uh, and, and, and then discuss some of the additional art items for the, for the criminal spot.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, so.
So, more to follow. I think he's, I, I think he's close to providing us with the information that we can start bringing to the council.
Right, so. Uh, any other reports from the council? If not, then I'll move on to council items separate from the city manager's regular, uh, agenda, uh, starting with Councilmember Mayor.
Well, thank you, Mayor Yu, just, uh, real briefly, uh, the. Temple City Chamber, uh, did have our board meeting last Thursday. Uh, and we had a special guest, uh, Congresswoman Judy Chu. Actually joined the board meeting briefly and gave a legislative update of. Uh, the things she's been up to in DC, uh, she emphasized, um, a lot of the efforts. Um, that she took in terms of. Uh, assistance to small businesses, uh, uh, and on helping local jobs and the economy. And expanding access to capital through small business administration loans and so on and so forth. Uh, so it, it was a nice surprise that we, we didn't know if she was gonna be able to join us until the last minute and, uh. Mr. Brian Cook also joined us as well, so thank, thank you, Brian, for, for joining us. Um, and so that was a nice surprise. Uh, on city-related events, I do appreciate, uh, our Parks and Rec, Rec staff keeping busy. With, um, you know, the classic car show that's coming up, I, I believe that's, isn't that this weekend?
Yes, it is this weekend from eleven to three.
Okay, yeah, we have that coming up, uh, which is, which is great, um, and we also have the, the Halloween. Um, drive-by trick-or-treating, right? And, and on that note, I, I do wanna just make a comment that, um, I, I, I noticed that we. We have, um, I guess enhanced presence on some social media platforms such as Facebook and so on and so forth. But I think there's a, at least what I've observed is there seems to be a bit of a disconnect between that and our website. So just one example is, uh, the Halloween drive-through is posted on Facebook, but. If I go on our website, it's not. At least I don't see it. Not, not on the front page where we usually have the events scrolling, so. So I, I, my, my suggestion is that I know we're, we're working on updates to the website, but, um, may, maybe have. Our platforms a little bit more in sync as much as possible. I mean, especially since so many things are virtual now that, um. It makes more sense so that the information is, is kind of equitable across all, all platforms. Um, other than that, that's, that's all I have to share, thank you.
Uh, thank you, um, Castle Member Viscara.
I, I don't have much, um, I appreciate. Uh, um, our city planner getting together with me. And we worked a good long while on, on, uh, my understanding of, of SB nine. Um, and, and, um, I'm sure there'll be more to follow on that. Uh, beyond that, I really don't have much more, oh, and by the way, just an aside. I'm still, I don't know about everybody else, but I'm still getting a lot of comments on, on, uh. On Athens and trash, trash. And, uh, so just deal with it, I try and, and explain it away as we go along. And lastly, totally off the subject, the reason I was late was I had gone to the Dodger playoff game. And it was one of the most exciting games I've ever seen. It was, it, it was really great, plus the fact that one made it even greater. So anyway, just aside. Thank you very much.
I think that qualifies for good cause, uh. Going to the Dodger playoff game, it certainly, for me, would, I'm surprised you even made it back, uh.
That's my devotion to you guys.
Yeah, there you go.
All right, thank you, uh, Councilmember Chavez.
Um, nothing really, I, 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 I was gonna say that. Council Member Viscara and I both attended the JPI conference a couple of weeks ago, uh, down in San Diego and. As always, it was a, a great conference, uh, uh, Katie was there as well and, uh. There was some good sessions and a nice location and, and they did put on a, a, a good, good live. Conference, uh, which we haven't done for a couple of years and so it was a, a good experience and, um. We do have a, I do have a JPI Executive Committee meeting next, uh, next week, so. Next meeting, I'll report out on any new developments there, so. That's it for me, thank you.
Right, thank you, Mayor Bratton Sternquist.
Um, I was wondering if they have any extra books that you could pick up a couple?
Any extra what?
Did they not have a book from the, um, Admiral or General, what was?
No, you know, that was the disappointing thing, uh, um, that was the, uh, the captain from the, um. Um, the one that Tom Hanks played on where the Somali pirates, uh. Uh, attacked, uh, their, their freightliner, uh, gosh, I, do you remember his name Fernando? I gotta, can't remember.
I'm trying to think of it, I can't.
Uh, anyway, I think we're all familiar with the movie that Tom Hanks played the character.
Captain Phillips or something?
Yeah, there you go, yeah, I think it was Captain Phillips, you're right. Unfortunately, they didn't have any books and we were all wondering, hey, where's our book, but I don't know, there was some disconnect there, but. If I'm able to get one, I definitely will get one for all of you as well, so, um, unfortunately, they didn't have them there at the, at the conference.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Brian, you were great for, you know, your, your work regarding the parking, it doesn't go unnoticed and also, um. For sending us back the, uh, reports from the county, I really. Like looking at them, it gives me a good idea of. Around, so I just wanted you to. And that's all.
Right, thank you, I, we don't have any major, uh, things to add, so. Thank you, and, uh, from with that, I'll move on, additional public comments and item not listed on the agenda. So. So we'll, we'll get our time clock going and at this time, I'd like to ask the public. Uh, if you want to, if you're watching at home and want to call into the Zoom number. Uh, once you're in, the city clerk will make sure you're able to speak. And Madam Clerk, are there any public callers, uh, at this point?
Mayor Yu, there, there is one caller and I asked the caller to unmute if they wish to speak.
Okay, while we're waiting, are there any email comments for this public comment period?
Mayor Yu, there are no email requests to speak.
Okay, we'll wait for a couple minutes and. And I do see a Mr. Jim Bazian with us. Mr. Jim Bazian, do you want to address the council?
No, sir. No, sir, I'm, I'm just fine. It's just a little frustrating to listen to the meeting tonight. And I just got to be honest with you. It's not a good experience for the person listening. And, you know, I'm hearing almost every other word from Cindy. And there just needs to be a better job of, of communicating. It just, this is not working out well. So hopefully, next month, you'll vote to go back to city council and have a more interactive meeting with their council and at least being able to see your faces. So that, that's all really I have to say. Thank you for listening.
All right, thank you, Mr. Jim Bazian. Appreciate that, that comment, even though you didn't, you said that you weren't going to comment, but appreciate that. Yeah, I, I think tonight we have a little bit more trouble than, than other days. So with that, I will close public comments. And our meeting is adjourned for tonight. Have a great evening, everyone.
Thank you.